For the record, a school committee woman, Barbara Gresham, is unable to attend. She's attending a forum with our new state education commissioner Jeff Riley. And we're very happy to have the middle school representatives here. Our Springfield empowerment zone and Sergeant Praxton out there, he sounded really, really good. So first, is Chestnut Talented and Gifted, Tandy Ronell, is going to do some opening remarks. And then we have Kalen Gomez, Tiana James, Angelina Delgado, Gladys Shingero, correct me if I say your name wrong, Cameron Barnett. And that's trombone, Mr. Barnett. Gladys is trumpet. Angelina is saxophone. Taana is saxophone. Kalen is clarinet. So let's put your hands together for the Chestnut Talented and Gifted. Come on up. And they're joined here by their Angela Baucher, band and music teacher, Julia St. Martin, assistant principal. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You're on.
Hello. I am Tandy Ronell. I'm a student at Chestnut Tag in eighth grade, and I think Tag's given me a pretty good education. You see, at Tag, we're really pushed to be our best selves, right? Whether that's like in the classroom or just like with our prep traits and persevere, respectful, engaged, positive, and prepared. And you see, at Tag, if you're like failing, or not failing, but like not doing well, you will be helped by teachers and just the staff to help you get to a point where they know you can be. And even like if you're passing really well, they'll still push you to do better than you are at that point, to be your best self. And you see, when I came to Tag, I had the opportunity to join the band, which, you know, they play tonight. Yeah, I thought that band would assist me, you know, help me develop my musical skills. And I thought that might help me later in life with, you know, maybe I'd play in a band when I'm an adult or something.
What instrument? What instrument?
Oh, I play clarinet. Yeah. Let me socialize with other people who were also interested in band and music, and it's been a really fun experience playing the clarinet. And like just today, we were able to go to Westfield State, and not only was that fun, we got to play with people who were at a college level and, you know, showed you what you could potentially be one day if you keep playing your instrument. And I think that's really positively affected me at Tag. And I think overall, my experience at Tag has been a pretty good one. Ten out of ten, would recommend.
Nice job, Tandy. Nice job.
Yeah, tremendous.
Keep marching like those saints. Thank you, Chestnut Talented and Gifted. We appreciate that. Duggan Academy, middle school is in the house, and it is Alexalise Craig-Flemrong Rodriguez, and accompanied by Principal Calvinese is here. I know I see Ms. Fitzgerald and Assistant Principal Sullivan are here. Please correct me if I said your first name wrong.
Alexalise.
Oh, yeah, okay. Let's do it, okay. Thank you for being here this evening.
It's my pleasure. Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and members of the school committee. My name is Alexalise Rodriguez, and I am here to share my story of Duggan Academy. My story's in sixth grade. My story starts in sixth grade when I was given an enrichment called wiffle ball. I never played before, so I would just sit there every Thursday and have an attitude with everyone. After three weeks, Mr. Hurley talked to me and convinced me that I would enjoy wiffle ball and that trying new things was a part of being a J-Hawk. I finally tried wiffle ball, and I have to tell you, it was pretty awesome. That day was the start of a new Alexalise. It was the start of someone who would have a voice in the school and was not afraid to try new things. As I look back on my time at Duggan, I'm a little bit embarrassed at some of the things I did in sixth and seventh grade. From the Cs and Ds I received in sixth grade to the drama-filled person I was, I became the first half of seventh grade. I finally decided to make a change for the positive. If I wanted to get better, the opportunities were there for me. And get better, I did. Mr. Sullivan told me not to talk about him, but he told me I had to brag. I currently hold a 4.07 GPA so far in my eighth grade year. I sat on two different panels and spoke to the state during our state visits, and I have truly learned to have a voice at Duggan. It was never my intention or thought, but I have become a leader by example in the eighth and across the school. For the last year and a half, I started to suggest some new enrichments. I helped start a cosmetology enrichment because, well, everyone needs to look good. We brought in a hairstylist to teach different hairstyles and how to apply makeup. Some of us really needed the work. It has become the most popular enrichment at Duggan. Of course, there are some that don't require services. Sullivan. That's a thing that the Duggan family has helped us get through. We may have bumped along the road in an occasional B+, but we are focused on one thing: get better every day. Next year, I will be taking my talents to Central High School and become a golden eagle. I will never forget my experience as a J-Hawk. I will take with me all of the skills and leadership capabilities that I have learned at Duggan Academy, and I realize that I must continue to grow in order to lead at Central. I was once told by a wise person that I needed to try new things. I'm going to finish out the year strong and hopefully get the chance to impress Mr. Toll Cars in the fall. Oh, and if Mr. Toll Cars is listening, Duggan says you're welcome. I'm on the way.
Great job, Mrs. Collin. Very good. Nice job. Nice job. Okay, Forest Park Middle Schools in the house. Zain St. Fard, Liliana Jimenez-Montagna, and I believe Principal Mazza, Tommy Mazza's here. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and honorable school committee members. My name is Zain St. Fard, and this is my classmate, Liliana Jimenez-Montagna. We are both eighth grade students at Forest Park Middle School, and we are here to tell you how Forest Park has prepared us for high school. After three years at Forest Park, I feel prepared for the challenges of both high school, both academically and socially. Academically, I have greatly improved my grades since sixth grade. I accomplished this by making better friend choices and keeping myself away from distractions. In addition, I have learned to keep myself on task in class. My teachers have encouraged me along the way to complete my work and come prepared to stay after school for extra help, to make up assignments or just to keep me motivated. Socially, I've been able to overcome my fear of meeting new people. I've met good friends along the way with similar interests through C3's Forest Park Basketball League. I played basketball and got to know others who I might not have met or been friends with before. Overall, my three years at Forest Park have been a remarkable experience. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening.
Thank you. Nice job.
There's my friend Liliana.
Okay, Liliana, how are you?
Hi, my name is Liliana Jimenez-Montagna, and I'm an eighth grader from Forest Park Middle School. Forest Park has prepared me to be successful in high school because our eighth grade teachers have basically treated us like high school students. I am currently taking honors Algebra I, which is technically a ninth grade class. While it is somewhat challenging class, my math teachers from the past few years, Michelle and Mr. Ramos, have helped improve my math skills so well that even Algebra I seems easy sometimes. In history class, our teacher, Ms. Katone, has been assigning us high school-like work. She assigns us projects and then gives us multiple sources, including the textbook and outside articles. From there, we have to answer questions and cite evidence from the sources she's given us. Along the way, she gives us future due dates when certain parts of the project need to be turned in. I know from my older brother that this is a lot like the work he gets in eleventh grade at SciTech. In closing, my middle school years at Forest Park have been life-changing. I'm going to miss all of my friends and teachers who have helped me along the way as I start my new journey into high school. Thank you again, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members for having us here this evening.
Thank you, Liliana. Nice job. Thank you. Okay, Vansicle Rise is in the house. Kiara Rosado, Hezekiah Brown, Hager, Al Cabani, Daphne Torres, Iliana Rubet. If I pronounce your name wrong, please correct me. Oh, look at you with that Sinatra hat on there. I like that. I like that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Iliana, and I'm vice president at the school of Rise at Vansicle. Believe it or not, it's only two years old. The school is still new and the progress is doing great so far. Our principal, Ms. Breen, made this school because she knew about Vansicle wasn't doing well. So she made Rise to make sure everyone has a good education. She hired all the teachers because they all agree that students need an excellent education. Since last year was hard, she made a lot of changes, and now it's one of the best middle schools around, in my personal opinion. Thank you all for listening. Next up, Kiara.
Thank you. Hey, Kiara, how you doing?
Thank you, Iliana. Hello, my name is Kiara Rosado, and I'm the president of the student council at Rise. Today, I will be talking about changing things at Rise. The changes that students will at Rise are the dress code. The changes that student, wait, oh, sorry, I said that.
They're doing fine.
I have heard from other students that they want to change the color of the Rise shirts. And they also said that they want to, don't want to tuck in their shirts. This is an important issue for students. We are trying to make the school a better place for students to feel confident and to share how they feel without other students saying mean and harsh comments. Sorry. I think having the student council-
What are the students contacting you right now to, you're representing them, see?
I think having the student council is good for students to have the opportunity to come to us if they need to talk to us. We are all ears. Thank you all for listening to me. Next up is Hes.
Thank you. Yeah. Hey, Hes, maybe I should say Bruno Mars instead of Sinatra. Is that more, a bit better? Okay.
Okay. Hi, my name is Hezekiah Brown. I'm a seventh grader at Rise at Vansicle. Thank you for having me tonight. I am an SGA, and I am secretary. I'm going to be talking about the things I like about this school. One of them is the teachers. These teachers here will do anything to make sure that every student understands what we are learning. They're also funny, too. The main reason I like our teachers here is because they put up with us. Students here don't really understand how amazing these teachers are, but I do. Just recently, there's a problem with me and another student. It turned so bad that I couldn't focus in class, and the teachers helped me out by giving pointers on how to focus better and solve my problem. I've gone a long way in this school. I've gone a long way in the school, and they've been with me in every step. To me, these aren't just teachers, they're my family, and I thank all of them. Thank you.
Nice job, Hes. I apologize. You're also accompanied by Ariel Edelstein. We appreciate that very, very much. There you are. Okay, I didn't forget you. Okay.
Hello, my name is Hajar El Cabani, and I am a seventh grader at Rise. I like music, reading, sports, and I'm a student council. I will tell you about how the progress is here at Rise. Our students are working hard and participating in all of their classes. Rise is a good school because it gives all the students a chance to be great. Students get to share their ideas with the teacher or any adult in the school. Rise gives lots of help to their students and tries to make them an amazing students. Our principal, Ms. Breen, thinks that we need to get a higher level to make Rise better. She wants to have good expectations for students. She wants us to go to college. We have to work hard starting middle school. We have to encourage each other to do our homework. Thank you all for listening. Next up is Daphne.
Nice job. Thank you. How are you?
Good. Good evening. My name is Daphne. I am a sixth grader at Rise. Thank you to my fellow peers for explaining how great Rise is, what improvements we think is needed, and the progress Rise has made so far. Unlike other middle schools, Rise has a long way to go because we're really new. But we are happy to be students at Rise at Vansicle. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice job, kids. My alma mater, Kylie Middle Schools in the house. Angelie Restodones and Lydia Olivero. They're accompanied by Otilio Olivero, assistant principal. Come on down. Alvarado, I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Angelie Resto, and this is my classmate Lydia Olivero, who will not be able to assist me today. I am here to tell you about the amazing things that are happening this year at Kylie Middle School. Our teachers have been working hard all year to implement the school-wide priorities. Priority number one: instructional practices for improving instruction. All students will demonstrate proficiency and the ability to explain their thinking and demonstrate their understanding. All teachers will implement daily writing using the summarizer book. Discussion tasks will be facilitated through sentence starters posted in every classroom to ensure students have ample opportunities to explain their thinking. Success will be measured by interim assessments and monthly constructive response questions. Priority number two: student-specific support and instruction to all students. We have developed a professional learning system which provides all staff and team members with the tools to implement well-structured lessons and meet the needs of all students through planning and resources. The PLS will be structured to allow teachers to visit model classrooms, develop effective and engaging lesson plans, and to develop best practices across all content areas. The use of the IPG will give teachers timely and specific speed, feedback, sorry.
No, you're doing fine.
The administration team and coaches are using the Instructional Practice Guide to conduct twice-monthly learning walks that will drive the focus of our professional learning system. Priority number three: school culture and climate. All teachers are contributing to a school culture in which adults are professional and act with urgency. Students will continue to be treated with respect, positive relationships have built, and success at being celebrated. PBIS and trauma-sensitive training has been provided to all staff. Success is being measured by monitoring monthly SWISS data and ILT and PBIS committee conducting quarterly learning walks with culture and climate rubric. All of our students and teachers have been working extremely hard to get ourselves prepared for NCAS, which will begin next week. This will be the first time we are taking the NCAS on computers. This is our opportunity to show that our hard work and dedication has paid off. We have our NCAS rally today, and I believe that we are ready and I am confident that we will do a great job. We recently had a dress down day at Kylie to benefit the Children's Miracle Network. Students could come to school out of uniform for a $2 donation. Mr. Donarzano also organized a cardio challenge, where staff members either participated or pledged money towards someone to reach a specific cardio goal at the gym. Between the money raised through the dress down day and staff pledges and donations, we were able to raise over $3,000 for the Children's Miracle Network. At Kylie, students have had the opportunity to go to several college awareness field trips, including Westfield State Universities, Farmingham State, and UMass. Our teachers are always talking to us about preparing ourselves to succeed in high school so that we can attend these amazing colleges and universities. We are looking forward to receiving our high school assignment letter on April 13th, and we are ready and hopeful that we, of what the future will bring. Our three years at Kylie have been an amazing experience, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of my teachers, counselors, and administrators for working with us over the past several years. I have built many great relationships and shared many memories with so many special people. My time at Kylie Middle School is something that I will never forget. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Nice job, Vansicle. Great job. That concludes our middle school empowerment zone speak-out. We'll be in recess for a few minutes, and then we'll start our formal meeting. You're more than welcome to stay. If you have to leave, again, happy Easter and happy Passover to you and your families. Nice job. Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Attorney Murphy.
Present.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Perez.
Present.
Ms. Hurst.
Present.
Madam.
Present.
Here. Present. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence, and then we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For the record, school committee woman Barbara Gresham is unable to attend. She is at the forum for the new state education commissioner Jeff Riley, which we're very happy that he's coming on board. And to all the people in the audience and to the viewing audience, myself and Superintendent Warwick and our school committee members want to wish you a happy Easter and a happy Passover. With that, we'll move to approve the minutes of the March 15, 2018 regular school committee meeting. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Hearing none. There's a motion by Attorney Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, these are items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve White Street School, my old alma mater, students to travel to Red Gate Farm in Buckland, Mass. May 2nd through May 23rd, 2018.
Actually, May 21st to the 23rd.
Okay, I'm sorry. May 21st, it's a long trip. May 21st to, May 23rd.
They would've missed too much in the end. Kristen would've never allowed that to happen.
Now, Principal Hughes, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, there's a circular in your package on this. We've taken, the kids have taken this trip for a year. I'm recommending approval.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Hughes.
My son is actually gonna be going.
Oh, good.
He's attending White Street, so I don't know if I should be abstaining from voting. I don't know. I'm just asking.
No. I don't think it's a conflict.
Thank you. Just checking.
Well, it's either that or your son doesn't go. No.
Absolutely.
I think, I think you're clear.
Okay.
Tonya, you get special dispensation. I'm sorry.
Just means you gotta go with him.
Yeah, yeah.
They won't let parents go.
You say yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Better make sure.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Yes, Morse Fisher votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. C is to approve the acceptance of a donated 2002 Volkswagen GTI for the auto mechanic students to work on at Roger L. Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, this has come through our budget and finance committee, recommending approval on this. Mr. Jays Rosario Sanchez donated the Volkswagen.
Thank you.
They donate the cars to Putnam so the kids can have the opportunity in the shop classes to work on them. So I'm recommending approval and accepting. Didn't know if Mr. Collins wanted to speak to it for the subcommittee.
Pretty simple.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, too. We appreciate your generosity and belief and investment in our students. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Yes, Morse Fisher votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. D is to approve the release of funds of the amount of $1,061,137 for the Mass Mutual City Connects grant, which we're very, very appreciative of. Mass Mutual's been a great corporate citizen for 160, nearly 167 years. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really significant. Mass Mutual stepped up. They looked at the results of the schools and the students who had City Connects in their schools and a lot of our Level Four schools that exited Level Four because of the wraparound services that were involved in City Connects. And Dennis Duquette, in charge of the corporate giving for Mass Mutual, looked at how well the data was going in those schools, how well the kids were doing. And they stepped up and gave us over $1 million to fund eight more schools in the City Connects program for the next year. You know, they've been great corporate citizens for years here in Springfield. They're relocating more of their workforce here, which is a great thing for Springfield. But every year, they've always stepped forward, what can we do for the schools? So to step forward with a grant like this for a program that really has been of great benefit to our kids, I think is laudable. We're gonna bring Dennis Duquette down when he come down, just to recognize him and the staff at Mass Mutual. But this is incredible, so there's eight schools that didn't have the program now. We've got the program going in those schools, as well as the 16 we already had funded. So this is a huge step forward for the city of Springfield, and very, very grateful to Dennis Duquette and Mass Mutual.
Dennis Duquette, who was just here a few hours ago, they made a quarter of a million-dollar investment to our new East Forest Park library that we're gonna be building, and with former Mayor Ryan and I, we announced that today. And he has come back to his native home and is a Springfield resident and heads the Mass Mutual philanthropic arm. So we're very appreciative of that. I don't think, school committee members have any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Yes, Morse Fisher votes, matter passes. Thank you, Mass Mutual, again. E is to approve the decommission, sounds like a Navy ship here, decommission of the parcel of 10364-0007, not 007, 007 as school property. Superintendent Warwick, could you please explain this?
Yeah, we took this through our Building and Grounds Subcommittee. We're recommending approval. This is a little parking lot behind a parcel across from SciTech on Goucher Street that we no longer need or use for the city, and we wanted to turn it back over to the owner for a purchase and put it back on the tax rolls. So I think it makes a lot of sense. So I'm recommending approval. Chris, I don't know if you wanted to speak to it as chair of that subcommittee.
It's a 4,000-square-foot lot, Mayor. It couldn't be used for anything. The abutter, I believe, has some interest in adding it to his parcel. So it got unanimous recommendation of the Buildings and Maintenance Subcommittee.
Well, I appreciate you adding that to our general fund tax rolls very, very much. That's good on that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Collins. Roll call, vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Yes, Morse Fisher votes, matter passes. Thank you, Mass Mutual, again. E is to approve the decommission, sounds like a Navy ship here, decommission of the Well, I appreciate you adding that to our general fund tax rolls very, very much. That's good on that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Collins. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham, absent, Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Morse Fisher votes, matter passes. Thank you very much. Tonight is a, an evening of celebration of achievement, and tonight, we're going to recognize a few of our teams that did very, very well regionally. And the first to be recognized is the Putnam Vocational Technical Academy Wrestling Team. Superintendent Warwick?
Oh, we on the Dennis, right?
Dennis, those first.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Well, you know what? Let's, let's do that. Can the wrestling team hold? Don't put me in a headlock or anything on that, okay? Because this'll be more apropos or appropriate. So, we're gonna recognize one of Springfield's favorite sons, Dennis Fenton, for his induction into the Massachusetts chapter of the National Wrestling Hall of Fame on April 7th. Mr. Fenton is a gentle giant, and if you talk to anyone that he's coached, especially their family members, they think the world of him. So, put your hands together for Hall of Famer Dennis Fenton.
Come on down, boys. I think it's especially appropriate with Putnam's wrestling team here tonight. Dennis was not only a legendary athlete in the city of Springfield, one of the best ever, I would say. I had the good fortune of knowing Dennis my whole life. He grew up here in Springfield on Hungry Hill. He's a legendary athlete. All Western Mass in football. Most people forget, he was, he was an incredible football player. Moved on, played four years at UMass. All ECAC, all Yankee Conference for four years in football while he was winning awards every year in New England and wrestling champion, year after year after year. Probably one of the greatest athletes that ever came out of the city of Springfield. One of his great legends, he was a great teacher here for us for 34 years in physical education in the city schools. And he was a great coach and very successful at a lot of our schools. Putnam, Cathedral, Classy, he was a classical athlete. And I will tell you that I got to watch Dennis very, very closely playing when he was a player, and he was just outstanding. We all looked up to him. Then my son had the good fortune of wrestling for Dennis, and he was just an outstanding coach. Not only just knew the wrestling, motivated kids, but the modeling he did, working with all the young men, became better young men for having worked with Dennis Fenton. He was absolutely incredible. Now, National Wrestling Hall of Fame. So, the Putnam Wrestling Team is here. I thought that was appropriate, but absolutely incredible. I also watched him coach his sons, and that was, that was special at Cathedral High School. So, just, I want to thank you, Dennis, for all of your wonderful service to the city of Springfield, both as a teacher and a coach and then a role model for our kids. And I want to recognize you.
School committee members, any comments like to be made? Attorney Murphy?
If I may, Mayor. So, first of all, congratulations, Dennis, to your induction into the Hall of Fame. And, you know, Dennis and I go back a long way. In 1985, we worked at the York Street Jail together, and we, we got to know each other. And there really isn't, not a better person, as great of an athlete as Dennis was and is. You know, he is a great person and a very humble person, and particularly a person of faith. And we worked at the jail for a couple of years together. And, and then, when I went to UMass, at the, I was a, I did judo, and outside the wrestling room, they had a big picture of Dennis Fenton in his wrestling outfit. And, you know, he was a very, he was athletic and very intimidating, but I was very proud to be able to go up to UMass and to see somebody from Springfield. And also, you know, Dennis has continued to serve our community, not just as coaching at Putnam and Cathedral and, and other places as Danny indicated, but also runs the Richard Child's Road Race in Van Horn Park for all of our kids on Tuesday nights during the summer, and has continued to be just a great citizen. And, and, you know, it's, one thing that I remember, Mike Rogers, who's an old friend of many of ours who grew up on Hungry Hill and New Mike and Danny and myself, I know he used to say, there's not a better person that you would want to coach your children than, than this man. And that is the truth. And so I'm very proud, Dennis, that you, that you got this award. I'm proud to call you my friend. And, you know, he was a, is, is a great athlete. Of course, I look older than him. He's about 10 years older than me, but he's, you know, he's in better shape than I am. But, you know, he's, he's done tremendous things for our community, coaching, teaching, mentoring people, and of course, you know, a person of tremendous faith. And so we thank you for your service to this community, Dennis. And I thank you personally for your friendship, and we're very proud that you're in the Hall of Fame, and it's well deserved. And I know there's kids here that you coached, Putnam and wrestling, and so we're very proud of you and thank you for all you've done for our city.
Nice job, Burke.
He's here with his wonderful wife, Gwen, who's been supporting him all these years, so I just wanted to recognize her as well.
You taught him all those moves, right? Am I correct, Gwen? That's right. Any other comments for Mr. Fenton?
How do you follow those two impassioned speeches? But just, congratulations, Dennis.
Thank you.
I have to say, Coach, tremendous on the field, on the mat, and that's a testament to not only your athleticism, but your smarts and your guile, but probably even more of a bigger testament is the mark you continue to leave on our young people. And, you know, hearing stories about you, one of the all-time greats, and I say gentle giant because you could manhandle somebody on the field or on the mat, but you'd be the first one to help them up and pick them up. And that's a great attribute you have. But anybody, and Murph is right, and Superintendent Warwick, anybody that you've coached, it's all I hear, is the life lessons that you've, you've taught them, not only on the mat but off the mat. And it's not very easy to become a Hall of Famer, especially on this level. And I know you're very humble and genuine, but this is so much well deserved. We have something for you, but we want to turn over the podium to you, so congratulations
So I've lived in Springfield all my life and grew up in Hungry Hill and been involved with public schools all my life as far as my wrestling and football career when I played. And the city has always been good to me and with the quality of coaching that was present in my Vansicle Junior High School and at Classical High School and coaches at Tech. I was involved with Freddie Sakurka over there through the years. So I've been blessed with having really strong men in my life as far as coaching. You know, my, my family, my parents were a blessing to me also, and God's been good to me in that way. But, you know, having strong coaches and strong male role models for me was, was really kind of a big thing in my life, and it had a big effect in it. Carried on at UMass, I had two great coaches, Coach Dick McPherson and Homer Bar, wrestling coach up at UMass. And they just modeled what a man should be like and the way they presented themselves and acted and, so it really had an influence on me. So when I finished UMass and I started to teach and coach, I really had a good group of guys that I could look back on and call up and model. And I just thought that, you know, my job really was to be a good example to my kids on my team. And so, it's not just enough just to talk it, but you need to walk it, too. They see what you're doing in your neighborhood. I lived in the neighborhood. I could, you know, my kids lived all around me, so, you know, it was important to me to model those kind of good behaviors. And so, that was important to me, and I think, you know, did have an effect over time on kids that I was able to coach. And the city's just been great. I love living in Springfield. You know, you hear all kinds of negativity about the city, but, you know, the, the school committee and the, the city of Springfield's always supported athletics, and it's very important for cities to have strong athletic programs. And we, we've been through some tough economic times, but I would always say that you have always supported sports teams and clubs and keeping kids involved, because that is so, so important. Kids with spare time and just find themselves in trouble. But the city of Springfield's always been great about having clubs and teams and organizations where kids, girls and boys can get together and have good role models and, and just adds an effect on the city. And so I'm just grateful for that. And also, just thank you for honoring me for, you know, my small impart here on, on the city.
Thank you, Dennis.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Roll call to Dave Alvarado. Oh, yeah. He's coaching the Putnam team. He was one of my wrestlers.
Oh, is that me?
So he was, he was working at the Ludlow Jail, and he, you know, was doing a great job there, but I was, I was actually moving on. My kids were going to Cathedral, so I kind of jumped ship. And I asked Dave, "Hey, Dave, how about coming over to Putnam and, and taking on a wrestling job?" And he did a great job, and now he's Western Mass champs.
Western Mass champs, yeah.
Well, Coach, Coach, this is presented to you, Dennis Fenton, with grateful appreciation for your dedication to the development of leadership and citizenship to the young people through your many years of coaching and teaching, spanning more than three decades in the city of Springfield and the Springfield Public Schools, setting the standard for sportsmanship, positive attitude through sport of wrestling. On behalf of the Springfield Public School Systems, School Committee members, myself and Superintendent Warwick, we congratulate you on this day, March 29, 2018. Come on down.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey, Coach, congratulations.
Thank you. You know what? Let's give it a box.
Oh, wait, we give it a box, too.
We have a box that comes with that.
Yeah.
It's an extra copy. So proud of you. And thank you for all you've done for our guests.
I'll tell you, I hate to catch a backhand from, I'll tell you that right now. Congratulations, Coach, and thank you. Well, let's keep this Putnam Vocational Technical Academy express rolling here. We're now gonna recognize Coach Alvarado is here, the Putnam Wrestling Team, which, Tad, I'm sorry, Mr. Central, they finally stopped that stranglehold of Central High in Western Mass and State New England. Superintendent Warwick, recognition of the Putnam Wrestling Team.
So the legend goes on after Dennis to Coach Alvarado. That was a great story. And it's so nice to have Putnam represented here and winning a Western Mass championship, so congratulations. And I didn't know the story about Dennis coaching you, so that's, that's just great when we have our Springfield kids come back and coach and do so much for our city. So you represent us well, so very, very proud of you.
Thank you very much, and Coach, well deserved, and thank you.
The floor is yours. I'm sure you brought some wrestlers, too, right?
I did. I got the old...
Because after you speak, we like to have them come up and loud and proud, say their name, their weight class, and it'll be great.
Absolutely. Just to echo what Coach Fenton said, it's really all about what, what's out there for the kids and keeping them off the street. Like he said, I work at the Ludlow Jail. I've been there 26 years. And my goal isn't so much about winning, though, obviously, winning a Western Mass title is outstanding, considering the last one that was won was in 1986 for, for Putnam. So these kids deserve all the accolades. I mean, they just did an outstanding job, but it's about, obviously, keeping them off the street, doing the right things. And I did learn that from Coach Fenton, and I want to thank him for that.
Yeah, bring the, Coach, bring the kids up, yeah.
All right. Just have them come up and introduce yourself, guys.
This Damian Figueroa. I was 138 wrestling pound.
Jamar Heath, 145.
Hey, Jamar.
Peterson, 195.
Juan Machacodi, 195.
Pedro Archifon, 113.
Ramirez, 120.
Mono Cruz, 132.
Kevin Peterson, 220.
Ah, Huggins, 182.
Look at Sharp there.
Andy Nugent, 145.
Otis Grant, 126.
Ahmad Juref, 160.
Tell your grandmother a wall, all right?
Brown, Brown, 152.
Oh, was she back there? Mabel back there?
I'm a fan, 285.
Randy Casiano, 126.
Zalom Martori, 170.
Jason Furus, also 160.
Christopher DeJesus, 152.
And obviously, I have to give thanks to my two coaches as well, Coach Harry Hill. And Coach Charles Covington. Definitely can't do it without those guys, my brothers.
Coach, 21, we have a, and we'd love to have the guys come up because we'd like to shake all their hands. So, we have from the Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts, the Springfield School Committee and Superintendent Warwick, myself hereby recognize Putnam Varsity Wrestling Team for your many accomplishments, including an undefeated dual meet record, 16-0, 2018 Valley League Champions, 2018 Western Mass Champions, third in the state Division 1, third in all states. This is presented again on the 29th day of March 2018 by all our school committee members, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic Sarno, and Superintendent Dan Warwick. Come on down, guys, coaches. On and off the mat. 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 On and off the mat.
Congratulations.
Where's, where's Mabel? Where's your grandmother? Is she back there? I see her, Ms. Sarno. Hey, Mabel, congratulations. On and off the mat. Excel on and off the mat. Whoa, Bruno Mars, man, you're all dressed up there. On and off the mat. Keep excelling. On and off the mat. Keep excelling.
You know what? You're the biggest bunch of wrestlers we've ever had.
Yeah. Coach, congratulations. Thank you for being here. Coach. Thank you for your support. Hey, guys, your coaches and your family instilling you, we don't, we not only want you to excel on the mat, but we want you to excel off the mat. We want you to continue to be scholars, athletes. You can't lose with that combination. So we're so proud of you. Congratulations on your Western Mass championship and continued success. Okay, I know, Mr. Central, Tad Tokar's a little depressed after that, but now we're gonna liven it up for you here. Two Central teams are in the house, and I didn't, was unable to see as many games as I wanted to see with my schedule, but I know at times that Superintendent Warwick and Vice Chair Collins were able to see a few games, and...
the state and just missing there, but won it last year, so that was incredible. Coach Maurer, congratulations to you. The kids just played their heart out. They played defense and they played like a team.
Johnny Cash, come on up, Johnny Cash. Always a man in black.
They really represented us well. But every time when I was talking to Tad or his assistant principals at the games and we were talking about the kids out there and they were just performing outstanding, they knew the kid's GPA, what colleges they were applying to, what colleges they were going to, and that was the discussion on the sideline. I think that's so important and that's what Central's all about, the scholars and champions. And I think that that's reflected in the program and why we're so successful every year. So, so proud of you and you were, you were really fun to watch. Incredible team.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any, before we go, any questions? Excuse me, any comments from our school committee members? Go ahead. Well, you're an alum. You're an alum.
That's right, I am an alum. Class of 97. 98. Oh, look at them.
And they played hoop, too.
I was a cheerleader, but I am just, I'm always excited and I love to hear all the great things that are happening in the city, but specifically when they're happening at my alma mater, Central. I just wanted to take a moment and I, I think that we've heard from so many great athletes tonight and I, I think they're all amazing, but as we close the month of March, I think it's accept, you know, it's very fitting that we recognize the girls basketball team because you are making history and positive history for this city. And so, in honor of International Women's Month and International Women's History Month, you guys should be very proud that you are very much a part of that. And so, we thank you.
Ms. Naylor?
Now, I'll echo, echo those sentiments and just say that just looking at the academics and not only are you out there being a force on the court, but also a force in the classroom, that is really commendable. So, just keep doing what you're doing and we are going to continue to advocate for you and support everything and cheer from the sidelines because we are so proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. You just heard from the Central alum faction over there. Any other comments from school committee members?
Oh, just very briefly, Mayor, just, just really proud of you guys, the Western Mass of Putnam Wrestling Kids and Western Mass of the Boys and Girls Basketball Championships from Central. You know, I, I love it when they don't write anything in the Boston newspapers and then we go down and, and you know, we kick their, you know, expletives. But I know this year, we didn't necessarily get as far as we wanted to, but we're always, we're always achieving. And you guys, you know, are great representatives of, of the city of Springfield and we're so proud of you. And you know, like, you know, has been said, there's, there's oftentimes people say negative things about Springfield and it's a bunch of nonsense. We have beautiful kids here. We, we accomplish tremendous things. We achieve in athletics and academics and we're, we're all very proud of you and, and congratulations and thank you.
Coach Maurer, and if you're at the ballgames, he is famous for wearing the man in black, Johnny Cash, and the Coach G and Coach Anderson and, and to the young ladies and to the parents. Sometimes I wear that T-shirt that you gave me, "Central Family." We are family and you girls have shown you not only excel on the court, but off the court. Player of the Year, Michaela, and Player of the Year with the, the boys squad also, George. And you won that state championship. You've always been in the run for the state championship. We were at the game and you played all the way to the end. A couple of things didn't go your way, but you still made us very, very proud down the home court here at the, the Mass Mutual Center. And it's important that we celebrate the combination of athletics and being scholars. And Central's credo again is, is scholars and champions, and that's who you certainly are. And I know many of you are going to go on further and you make us proud. So, with that, I will turn it over to Coach Maurer. Vice Chair Collins?
Girls, I just have to say it, it's a pleasure to watch you play. I get more enjoyment out of what, going to one of your games than any professional game that there ever is. You play with heart and you carry yourself, whether you win or lose, with such grace and dignity and poise that you, the city really is very proud of you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Coach Maurer?
Thank you for having us here. It's a, it's a pleasure again to be recognized. I know the girls are very deserving of all the accolades that they receive and the fact that you're talking about their grades and recognizing for that is even more important. I know when we were sending stuff back and forth with Ms. McCarthy that one of the things that we talked about was Michaela Thompson, our first quarter, she had a 4.11 and was our team leader.
A run, Michaela.
And second quarter, Rashida Guthrie had a 3.98 and she was our team leader, so. But as a whole, the, the team really, you know, we, we, as coaches, you know, look for them to take the lead and challenge themselves academically and with the class course load they take and they do a great job with that. They're in AP classes. They had a team GPA of 3.28 and 3.25, the two first quarters here. And it was nothing that we were doing. They, they, they were the ones that were responsible. I told the girls before the state final that this was probably the easiest job I've ever had coaching. They, they, they came to practice, they worked hard, they worked hard in the classroom, they, they showed up at study hall to do what they needed to do. They had fun when they was the right time to have fun, but when it was time to get to work, they, they came to work. And honestly, you know, there wasn't much that I had to do this season for them to get where they were and everything that they did goes directly to them. And honestly, looking back, watching film from the game many, many times, it was probably something that I could have done that helped change the outcome of that game for them and probably disappointed that I wasn't able to find that. But just an incredible group of girls, probably in my 12 years of coaching, the most fun I've ever had as a head coach. And it goes to them, it goes to Coach G, Coach Anderson, that make life very easy for me. And you know, congratulations to the boys team who did it again, too, this year. I think that's the first time ever that two schools had back-to-back boys and girls win state Western Mass championships and so. Over the course of these last two years, there hasn't been a Western Mass team that's beat either the boys or the girls team. So, it, it, it goes to show the growth of these programs and, and where the kids have challenged themselves to become better on and off the court. In the offseason, I know that our season ended and they took a week off and Monday they were in the weight room working out again and some were on the court, in the gym again, wanting to prove that they'll be back next year. And I think every year, everyone asks, "Well, are you guys going to be good next year?" And I think the girls have proven that they'll be the, the best team in this area and if not in the state, year in and year out. And so, congratulations to them. Thank you to all of you, Mr. Tokars, Mr. Worthy, their, their support has always been great. They, they've been, you know, a very special group of people that are always looking out for the girls and making sure that they're staying focused on what they need to do, which is, again, the Putnam coach, congratulations to him and talking about where they're going to go next. And, and I think that that's what the girls are focused on right now is, you know, what comes after this. Enjoy this moment, but what comes after this? So, again, thank you for everything.
Coach, before you, we bring the girls up, Mr. Central, Principal Tokar, would you like to say a few words?
I'm just, you know, I'm proud of...
Well, come on up to the mic. Come on up to the mics, somebody. Come on, come on, come on.
No, I'm just so proud of the kids, coaching staff, the boys team, the girls team. I'm proud of Putnam. You know, I got, had an opportunity to watch them throughout the season and I think they're, they all embody what Springfield's about, is just hard work and, and great mentorship. So, I'm just proud of, you know, city of Springfield, Roosevelt Avenue, and it's just a great day for us.
Thank you, Principal Tokar. Hey, Coach, can you, we'd love to have the girls come up and introduce themselves, please, and, and position. Know, know all of them there. And maybe what year? Loud and proud, ladies.
Hi, I'm Alicia Maxone, I play center.
Hi, my name's Selena Gonzalez, I'm a guard.
Good luck, Selena, on the athlete of the week, too. Voted for you a few times, huh?
I'm Michaela Redder and I'm a forward.
Okay, Michaela.
Michaela Thompson, I'm point guard.
Western Mass Player of the Year, right there. There she is.
Jada Guthrie, I'm a guard.
Okay.
I don't know what she's shooting, shooting for guard.
Yeah, spark plug.
Jada, G, I don't know, Jada, G, I'm a forward.
It's G, Jada, okay.
Selena Sanchez, I'm a point guard.
Yeah, very good. Congratulations. We, we have for you, let's get the right one here. Okay. Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts, Springfield School Committee and Superintendent Dan Warwick and myself recognize the Springfield Central High School Girls Basketball Team, 2018 Western Mass Division One Champions, presented on this day of March 29, 2018 by all our school committee members, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic Sarno, and Superintendent Dan Warwick. Come on down because we'd love to shake your hands. That's a player, too. Congratulations. This is G. Johnny Cash, congratulations. Coach, great job. Great coaching job. Kids were on board. All right. Okay, in the house, too, is Coach Dale Denson and the championship Division One Western Mass Champions Boys Basketball Team. Coach Denson, come on down. And Coach, I have to, Hassan Ward, thank you. He sent me a nice little thank you note and I appreciate that very much and that's a testament to how you school these kids, not only on the court, but off the court, too. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, thanks. Real pleasure watching your teams play also, Coach Denson. Incredible. The kids played so hard and conducted themselves so well. So, we, just a, a real treat to watch. And for Central, the boys and girls repeating, for two teams to repeat, it's never happened before. So, that's an incredible accomplishment for the school as well. But very proud of the kids, the way they conducted themselves and the way they played. They're really fun to watch and you did a great job coaching them. Thank you.
School committee members?
There's obviously something in the air and the water up there at Central. Everybody, every team that we watched from Central and guys who are wrestling, we didn't get a chance to watch you as much from Putnam. You guys play with such fierce competitiveness, but show the honor. And that last game of the season for you guys was a tough game, but I do have to say you lost with more dignity than that winning team showed and treated you and treated you with no respect from the fan, from the stands all night and you held your head high as well you should have. We're proud of you.
Okay, we're, we're going to the Central faction down there. Ms. Hertz?
Absolutely. Sue, of course, congratulations to, to the boys team as well, but I did just want to take a second and, and recognize that Coach Denson is also a Central alum and I know we heard from Coach Alvarado and I'm sure there are many out there, but it's just, it's just great that you guys have made a commitment to come back and mentor our young people and so, we are so thankful for that.
Thank you, Ms. Hertz. Ms. Naylor?
I also just want to congratulate the team and then I want to say especially to Coach Denson, he has a special place in my heart because he also coached my brother, who was on the Putnam team, that repeated a few years ago. And so, thank you for all that you're doing with our young people, just being consistent and being a role model and being a support to them. And he's doing very well where he's at and a lot of that is because of what you've done for him. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Any other, any other comments? Ms. Perez?
Yes, I'm sitting here and observing this and this is the village. This is what create our city and make our city so great. So, congratulations to you all.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Now, before I, I, I turn it over to Coach Denson and your dream and your goal will come about. You will be a state champion and I know that's evaded you the last couple of years, but you're going to get there, Coach. And I, we all do and I especially appreciate, again, what you do, again, for our, our young men, not only on the court, more importantly, off the court. And that's extremely important and to come back as an alumni and we're very, very proud of you. So, with that, we're going to turn over the podium to you, Coach, and after you're done, we'd like to meet the, the young men or let the public meet the young men. We know who the young men are. Coach Daryl Denson?
First, I give it out to God, who was the head of my household and that's how I've been raised for 40 years. So, I always give thanks to Him for allowing me to be in this opportunity and to be able to stand here in front of committee and just thank you for supporting this program. I want to thank Tokar, who was a great principal, one of my assistant coaches here, Rick Johnson, who's been a great support to the program. He's been there since day one. He runs my freshman program and most of the young men you will see are coming from the freshman program. We just, we try to just teach respect and, you know, just be determined to be successful. This year was a great year. It was a hard year for me coaching because I just had so much talent. And it's kind of hard when you have a lot of talent, the young men that want to play and want to win, how to use those minutes. But I tell you, these guys really, if you sit them down and let me leave the building, they'll tell you, "I'm a pretty hard coach to play for because I, I strive for the best." I don't believe in short term. I don't believe in settling for second. I still believe these kids are the best team in the state, will always be the best team in the state because they came out every night and played hard. They showed up to practice, they came to school, they never knew when I was going to show up because I don't work in the school. So, I'm blessed to kind of be on both sides of the spectrum. I work, I coach young men who are doing well in high school and I'm a program director at Tancom Road at the juvenile lockup. So, I have an opportunity to express to these young men how important it is to be successful because there's places for their behaviors. And I teach my young men in my program on Tancom Road, there's always a change. You're young enough, you're smart enough. I want you to go back to the community and be very respected and just show people you can do the right thing. And my job at Central is really to replace all you guys sitting there with these young men, these young ladies. Because I think it's important that our young students understand that staying home after they go to college somewhere far away, get away from us and come back is important. Out of my seven seniors, six of those seniors are going to college. So, I'm just really blessed to be in this position and I really take my hat off to Coach Maurer because he accepted me into that program as the boys coach and he's been there for a while, winning. He always told me, "You got to win banners." And I'm just happy we're able to do it together. I just say, I'm sitting over there thinking, Gino and Calhoun were just winning.
Yeah, you can.
Nothing wrong with that. But I also want to thank one of the female players, Rashida. She doesn't think I know, but I, I know everything that goes on with my boys. She actually was tutoring one of my young men who's having outside struggles at home, not only just in school, but he was having life struggles. He's not here tonight. He had a death in the family, but Rashida has been a support system to him since we've been there and I believe they're the same grade. She tutors him, she keeps him on his toes. And Rashida, I want to thank you publicly for taking Teresa under your wing and helping him because he right now has the best GPA on my program. And I charge it to my brain and on my heart, but there's somebody that's here that doesn't the family, but Rashida has been a support system to him since we've been there. And I believe they're the same grade. She tutors him. She keeps him on his toes. And Rashida, I wanna thank you publicly for taking Teresa under your wing and helping him, 'cause he right now has the best GPA on my program. And I, charged to my brain and on my heart, but there's somebody that's here that understands the impact they've had on my coaching career, and that's a Central alumni who played for Travis, with Travis Best and Coach Howie Burns, who I played for, and that's Mr. Amash Sharif.
Yeah, Amash. And thank you for the wrestling you're doing with our young men, too. That was a great article.
I saw your sports.
Oh, I know that. I know that. I see your mother right over there. Man, I saw her. I saw her. She taught you those moves over there, too. And thank you for protecting us on the street, too, Officer Sharif.
And I just thank Denise Hurst, who I've known for years. Me and her husband play Little League Baseball together since we was nine, and we still stay in contact. And it's a great thing just to have those community resources, just to keep going. And my pastor, Dr. Atu White, who I love dearly, and late Bishop Morgan and Big Will Williams, who raised me. So with that being said, I'm a Springfield kid. I'm a hard person to deal with, but it's all for these kids. Everything I do and everything I speak are for these young men that I coach. It's not for me. I mean, I just enjoy it, and I just wanna see them grow up and be the best they can possibly be. And I wanna thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Why don't you bring the young men up, too, to introduce themselves? Come on up, guys.
Um, yeah, come up to the podium, please.
Please introduce yourself and your, your position.
Malik Smith, shooting guard.
Malik, okay.
Gar.
Yeah, he's a point guard, point guard.
Anthony Kelly, point guard.
Yep, Aunt Kelly, yep.
Steve Warren, power forward.
Yep.
Guard.
Small forward.
Center.
Thanks for that note, the shot, too. Thank you. Yes, right, Coach.
George Torres is not able to be here. He's at work.
Player of the Year.
Him and actually Josiah Green are not both here, but they did both go to Post University yesterday.
Oh, great.
They were offered full scholarships, so we're just really-
Oh, all right. Well, Coach, we have, we have for you Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts, Springfield School Committee, Superintendent Dan Warwick, myself, Springfield Central High School Boys Basketball Team, 2018 Western Mass Division One Champions, presented on this day, the twenty-ninth day of March, 2018, by all our school committee members, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic Sarno, and Superintendent Warwick. Congratulations, guys, and that state championship will come very, very soon. Come on down. You wore sneakers that looked like work boots. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Congratulations. On and off the court, on and off the court, on and off the court. Hassan, thank you very much, yourself, and your performance. Coach?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
An emotion is there, I'll tell you that. Coach, great, and that will, that state championship will come your way. Will come your way. Oh, yeah. Right in that, in that church band there, too, and your drumming. And, and the R and B band, too, was excellent. You tore, they tore up the house in Court Square last summer. Okay. Thank you again. Great night, Central High School and Putnam Vocational Technical Academy, the scholar athletes that we have. And I appreciate that there is a member of the media here, Mike Dobbs, the managing editor of the Reminder, and they do a great job of highlighting our high school athletes, and we appreciate that very much, so.
Thank you, Mike.
With that, we'll move to reports of standing committee, student relations, parent concerns.
Mrs. Gresham.
Mrs. Gresham, again, she's at that forum. We'll take a one-minute recess so the teams can leave. Okay, congrats and happy Easter, happy Passover. Thank you.
Congrats, everyone.
We covered the item earlier on the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee. Thank you, Ms. Perez. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee?
Mrs. Hurst had to go to the MASC conference.
Okay, thank you. E is Budget and Finance Committee. Vice Chair Collins?
We did deal with the items. The only other item, we did hold a public hearing. While it probably wasn't as well-attended as we would like, we did have a great discussion among ourselves and the members of the public who did come.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. F, Vocational Education Committee?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. G, Technology Committee?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. H is School Safety Committee, and Ms. Gresham, again, is attending that forum. Report of the superintendent, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a circular from-
No report? You don't ever say "no report." I noticed that.
We noted. Short report. How about that? A note from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that Jeff Riley has been named our new commissioner. There's actually a meeting tonight. That's where Barbara Gresham went to. But, and he's taking over April fifth. They originally talked that he was gonna take over on July first. I'm personally really excited about it. I think Jeff did a great job in Boston as a principal and an assistant superintendent. And then in Lawrence is the receiver. I think that it'll be good for urban school systems to have a superintendent and someone who worked in an urban school system at the helm. We haven't had that, and I think it's gonna be a big step forward for us. And I personally respect Jeff, and I, the progress the Lawrence Schools made under his lead was laudable, so I think it's gonna be great for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And all the superintendents in the state were behind him. So I think that's a really good development. We've named our twenty-seven educators for the Pioneer Valley Teachers of Excellence, and we're gonna be bringing them down April twelfth to our school committee meeting. And then there's gonna be an event at the Log Cabin on May tenth. And then just a, a piece of your information, our HR department has been doing a lot of outreach and trying to attract more educators of color. And one of our job fairs, the circular for that job fair is in your package to review. And the Coach Fenton article appeared in the paper today, so I, I actually gave him the cutout of the article in the paper, but it was just a, a great article. And I was reading it. I, I knew him all my life, and I said, "Wow, he did that, too? And he did that, too?" It was just absolutely incredible. So I, I put that in there, 'cause I'm a Springfield kid, grew up here in the city, and then worked his whole life in the city after growing up here on Hungry Hill and served the city. So I, I think that was great. And I just, congratulations to all of our athletes. Western Mass champs repeating girls and boys for Central High School. And then our Putnam kids, typically a lot of vocational schools, you know, have some challenges in the athletics, 'cause the kids are working on co-op, and to see the boys win the Western Mass Wrestling title as well. So congratulations to all the athletes and happy Easter to everybody.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? And I just, on the teachers' awards, too, we always wanna thank Harold Grin spoon and his foundation for putting these forth and recognizing our teachers. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, any new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening. Thank you for watching. Happy Easter and happy Passover. Good night.